Eight AM to eight. They're located at the Carson Sheriff's Station. To facilitate viewing of our Carson City Council meetings will be available livestream on the city's website. The meeting on channels thirty-five, Spectrum, and ninety-nine, YouTube also. All communications of this portion of the agenda will be limited to one hour unless otherwise approved by the city council. For our participants, please state your name and identify the agenda item that you're speaking on. In lieu of providing your public comment live in person at the City Hall Community Center on the day of the meeting, public comments will be accepted by the city through the following three methods. Up until two hours prior to the meeting, publish start time on the date of the meeting. Comments received will be circulated to the city council and incorporated in the record. All public comments, regardless of how they are submitted, should indicate the agenda item you wish to address. If public comment is for a matter not listed on the agenda, please indicate that also. Public comments can be submitted prior to the meeting through the following ways. Email through cityclerk@carson.ca.gov or through the homepage of our city website at www.carsoncalifornia. CarsonCA.gov. Telephone your recorded comments to 310-952-1720, or you can drop them in the box outside of City Hall. Madam Deputy Clerk, the meeting is called. Hold on, may I have roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Arlene Rojas.
Present.
Councilmember Cedric Hicks.
Present.
Councilmember Joanne Hilton.
Present.
Mayor Protam Jim Dear.
Here.
Mayor Lula Davis Holmes.
Present. Invocation of our bishop?
Yes, Father, thank you for tonight. We pray that you would bless us, guide us in the right direction. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Slacks salute by Councilwoman Rojas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is a discussion item. It's the only item that we have on the agenda tonight. And to our city manager, please remind me under oral discussion to discuss the Assembly District, if I should forget.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I actually wanted to see if we could add a subsequent needs item, and that is for that particular item. Madam Mayor, there is a ten-day requirement that the letter be sent in. And we're looking for collaboration with the City Attorney's Office along with staff to ensure that we have a comprehensive letter that could be sent on time on behalf of the city council. So, we're asking for that subsequent needs item.
Thank you. To my colleagues, the subsequent needs item is that the city of Carson has been divided, Assembly Districts have been divided into two districts, sixty-five and sixty-nine, with the south portion from information that I received being a part of Long Beach. So, we want to add that as a subsequent needs item. I was just looking at that today. So, without exception, no objection?
No objection.
All in favor?
Aye.
The item will be item number two.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item number one, staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. Tonight, the staff is bringing forward to you consideration for a process for or appointment to the vacated office of the city clerk. We know that the city clerk vacancy has been created by the resignation of Ms. Myla Rothman. Ms. Myla Rothman was elected to serve through November of 2022 for the unexpired term of former city clerk Donisha Goss. So, under City Charter Sections three zero six B and D, set forth two options for the filling of that vacancy for you all tonight.
Thank you. Okay, to my colleagues, is there any comment or suggestions? I'll start with the mayor Protam.
All my comments until I hear the staff report from the city attorney.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Mayor Protam and honorable council members. As the city manager pointed out, Ms. Rothman was elected to serve through November of 2022 for the unexpired term of the former city clerk's seat pursuant to Charter, City Charter Section three oh six. The process for filling the vacancy is similar to the process is similar to the process of filling the vacancy for a vacant city council seat. So, the options are, one, appoint a successor to the remainder of the term. If the city council votes to vacancy by the appointment, the appointment must be made within sixty days from the commencement of the vacancy. The vacancy was declared by the city council on December nine, 2021, and therefore, the council has until February seven, 2022 to fill the vacancy by appointment. There is no legal requirement that the city council use any particular method of appointment. In the past, the city council has used an application process to fill vacancies. Should the council wish to utilize a similar application process, you can instruct your staff to use the applications from the past, and staff can advertise the vacancy and provide an advertisement for the vacancy and get nominations. The city council can also require additional criteria, including completion of a candidate's statement or other desired information the city council may wish to consider. The city council could appoint a subcommittee of council members to go through the applications and bring recommendations back. It is utterly within the city council's discretion to set up a process. Option number two is that you can bypass that process and just call for a special election. If you want to call for a special election to elect the successor, or if you cannot reach agreement on an appointment by February seven, 2022, then an election shall be called. The city council can call an election for the next available state election, which would be the June seven, twenty-two election. However, please note that the June election would be approximately for only five months, for a five-month term, as the office expires in November of 2022. So, if the council is so inclined to allow this to go to an election, the council may consider sending it to a November, 2022 election, because you would have had an election for that expired term anyways. The fiscal impact would be approximately $500,000 of additional costs to have a special June election. However, if there's an appointment, there's no additional cost. And if it's a November election, even though there is costs associated with that election, that is an election that's scheduled for this council body and for that city clerk's seat. So, it would not be, it would be a cost that the city would have to budget for regardless. So, those are the facts, and that those are the options available to the council body.
Okay.
That concludes my report.
So, I do have a question. You mentioned $500,000, that's half a million dollars, if it was a standalone special election, as opposed to the amount we were quoted for the last standalone city clerk's vacancy election, which was about $225,000. Why the doubling?
The number was provided to me from staff who had contacted the county registrar's office. So, we can have Mr. Roberts explain.
Mr. Roberts?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Protam. And I believe actually the cost was about $128,000 on the estimate, and that was based on one district. And so, looking at four districts, seeing that this is an at-large election, multiplying by that, by four comes approximately to the $500,000. I know that that was the number that staff is looking into to confirm, but that's what was provided to us on the previous action and ask that we had, looking at the previous city clerk position.
I see. Okay, that's all for the moment.
Councilman Hicks, any comments?
Just wanted to, well, at this point in time, it's just the idea of having a clerk, and then all of a sudden, the clerk is no longer here. So, here we are again at the eleventh hour, the same way we were prior to having this past special election, and just wanting to hope that we don't have to go through another special election at the cost of $500,000 to the taxpayers' money.
Councilwoman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I'm just, I'm reading the city charter, and I just want to reiterate that the city clerk's position is an elected position, and we did have that. And so, I believe that the community, the residents of the city of Carson, did make, did vote and did choose who they wanted to be as a city clerk. So, I completely respect that, and I would like that it does remain as that. I do want to make a motion right away that I believe that the second place for that position is Monette Gavina. And looking at the results that she, she won seven out of the twelve precincts. So, to me, even though she was behind and she was in second place, but the people, the residents of the city of Carson did speak, and that was their second choice. So, I'm making that motion that we consider Monette Maria Gavina to be chosen as the incoming city clerk to take the spot of Myla Rothman. So, that's my motion. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further comment?
I'd like to make a substitute motion. I'd like to appoint Dr. Kalia Bradshaw to city clerk.
The order is to vote on the substitute motion first?
Yes.
Okay, could you cast your vote for the second? The substitute motion is Dr. Kalia K. Bradshaw, Director of Local and Government and Community Relations at Cal State Dominguez Hills. That is the substitute motion. Could you cast your votes, please?
So, under discussion?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So, is this Ms. Bradshaw, is she going to quit her job with Cal State Dominguez?
I've gotten calls from a million people, all the way up to Elito Santorina, asking to be city clerk.
Asking, a million, a million people have approached you asking to be the city clerk? Anyone loves to have it served on a server platter and not campaign. I understand that. A lot of people do that. It's very common.
Yeah.
But what was the answer to the question?
I'm sure she will put things in perspective, whatever she needs to do, but let's call for the vote.
Could you cast your votes, please?
I think he's asking for a move of the previous question?
No, 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 no.
Or you're just discussing it?
No, no, you were discussing it. I mean, I'm sure she'll move in that direction, whatever she needs to do.
I see.
Could you cast your votes, please?
I don't think the voting system is working again.
Do a roll call.
Is it working? Councilmember Arlene Rojas? Is this for the substitute or the main?
This is the substitute for Dr. Kalia K. Bradshaw.
Councilmember Arlene Rojas?
It's a voice, voice vote by you.
Oh, this is for the second one?
Yes.
Substitute motion?
Yes.
Yes, decline, I'm sorry, no.
Councilmember Cedric Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember Joanne Hilton?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jim Dear?
No.
Mayor Lula Davis Holmes?
Yes.
So, one, two, three. Affirmative votes?
Yes.
Yes, of yes for the substitute motion?
Motion passes.
Yes.
To the staff, could you contact Dr. Kalia Bradshaw and make arrangements for her to be sworn in? Unless we can do that while we're working on this next agenda item, she can come in and be sworn in if she's available tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to confirm, you're requesting that we contact Dr. Kalia Bradshaw, and she be brought in, just be sworn in this evening?
Yes, let her know that the city council has voted to appoint her to the city clerk's position expiring November 2022.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
The next item on the agenda is added for our action, and that is to, staff, could you give us a report based upon the conversation that we had there, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, and so, there is a, there was a request for a subsequent needs item due to the request to have a letter opposing the Assembly District remapping. And we want to ensure that there is a comprehensive letter that can be submitted on behalf of the city in collaboration with our city attorney's office, ensuring that the letter is comprehensive, and it does state the opposition of the city council to the possibility of the redistricting and all, and all allow the city attorney to elaborate on that as well.
Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Roberts gave me a draft of a letter that he had prepared, and I feel that there is legal precedent that needs to be discussed about how it's against the law to divide communities. And it's, of course, legally, so he wouldn't have access to the case law to be cited. So, I suggested that we add this item as a subsequent need item for several reasons. One, the letter is from the entirety of the council, so the entirety of the council has to approve it and authorize it. And two, it would give us time then, instead of this letter going out today, it would give us time to put the legal support for our position. So, if the council could vote to authorize staff and the city attorney's office to draft a letter in opposition of the proposed state Assembly District map that would split the city of Carson, I'm happy to put a draft together, circulate it to the council members, so you can review it. And if you have changes, let me know, and then we can get it out within the ten-day timeframe.
Okay, so on discussion, I'd like to see the map for one. And second of all, you mentioned something about illegal to divide communities, but communities are divided by the state redistricting commission all the time. I mean, you know, I mean, it's very common. You say it's illegal, but it's done all the time, so what's up with that?
That's, sorry, but you're absolutely correct. Words matter. There are cases that said, there are case laws that set parameters as to how that can be done effectively. So, there's an analysis that can be discussed that is missing from the current draft. That's what I meant.
So, are you suggesting that we write a letter claiming that it's illegal for them to do what they've been doing? What they did ten years ago and what they're planning to do this time? Is that what you mean?
To encourage them to take the council's comments about their community not being divided, and to the extent there's going to be a division, it is looking at the proper way that that can be done without creating issues for your residents' voting rights.
Okay, well, I'd like to see that map. It sounds interesting.
Madam Mayor?
Just a second. Printed as maps sixty-five and sixty-nine. Did we have those available for my colleagues?
We do have those maps, Madam Mayor, but we were advised that we should probably hold off on that. We can get them and provide them here briefly if you like, because it was with the letter, and I spoke with the city attorney. She thought that would be best. But we can provide that. We have it now. The mayor was actually able to provide that. We can provide you a hard copy now. That's all it is. So, if you'd like, we can go ahead and, we can provide that.
I have a, I have a copy that staff gave me today, so we can, we can have staff make a copy and make sure every council person receives it.
Sure, that's fine.
You can also email them that link that I sent you, and then you could look at it. Mayor Protam, there's a link. There's also, the maps are attached, and also in the link, there is a questionnaire that we can have our residents fill out and state their concerns also, because there's Assembly Districts sixty-five and sixty-nine. South Carson is in sixty-nine. North Carson is in sixty-five. And I think the divide is at Delama, but we, all that's on the link that I received, okay? Hilton.
Madam Mayor? Oh, go ahead, go ahead. I was waiting patiently.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Councilman.
I had a question I wanted to ask the city attorney. In regards to them splitting the city from sixty-five and sixty-nine, what is the deadline date that we have to get a letter to the powers that be? Because I don't want us to be late, and I want it to get in in a timely manner.
Thank you, councilmembers. So, the ten days actually comes from the date of the notice that we received from yesterday. I got the email today from Madam Mayor, but it was dated yesterday. And so, that would give us the twenty-third.
Okay, so we need to?
So, we'll make sure that?
As it's been stated expeditionally, we need to get this done.
We will ensure that we get that. The city attorney is already starting to draft as well, so we'll have that for you and have that out for all council to review.
Thank you.
Councilman?
I just wanted to make sure that we were firm in saying that we wanted to be in one district, and it be that, that we're not on the fence. We would like to be in our Assemblyman's District and not to say that, because I think that these, all these redistricters, or they are, I mean, I heard one guy, you know, one question asked, why would he split up a district? He said, because my mom always wanted to run for Assembly, and he split a district in the middle. Those things aren't good for communities of interest. Carson is a whole community of interest together, and I make sure that our city attorney is firm on saying we want to keep Carson together. So, that's my hope.
Well, very firm as for me also, because this is, you know, sixty-five and sixty-nine, and to have two Assembly people, and we're talking about, this community has a lot of similar characteristics, and we just want to make sure, if at all possible, that we have stay-in counts, Assembly District sixty-five, the new district, old sixty-four, now sixty-five.
Now, y'all may not be able to answer this question. Jim might be able to answer this question. Those delegates who happen to be a part of Central Committee, do they shift over, or do they?
Yes, they would. Well, we're, we didn't see the map yet, so we can't call on that. But where's AD sixty-four located in the proposed new maps? Is it shifted north, south, east, or west?
AD sixty-four becomes sixty-five.
Oh, they just changed the number?
They just changed the number.
Yes, sir. But isn't it based on your resident?
Then those living in AD sixty-five would then be delegates to that new Assembly District, and there are elections coming up for that anyway. So, then people living in AD sixty-nine would run against other people in AD sixty-nine. Where were you registered to vote? That's correct.
You'd be split. They'll split them.
So, we might be in different Assembly Districts?
We would be.
Delegation?
You would.
We could both be on the County Central Committee. Wouldn't that be fun?
I'm looking at it from the ninety-eight thousand, six thousand residents, you know?
We'd have double representation, and we had two Assembly Districts.
Yes. Mr. City Manager, Acting City Manager, could you also send out that link? And then we need to let our residents know that they can fill out that questionnaire and talk about the districts also. Let's get that out as to our residents on social media, whatever we need to do, because it's a little questionnaire that they comment on the district, and they can say sixty-four, I mean, sixty-five and sixty-nine, their opposition or their support of, or whatever.
No, I would be in AD sixty-nine according to this.
Sixty-nine, he'd be in sixty-nine.
And you would be in AD sixty-five. But it's a...
That map came out at the last minute I was informed, because when we first started looking at it, we were all in one district, and then?
Look, they're cutting Gardena in half. They cut Hawaiian Gardens in half.
They left Long Beach whole.
That's probably what it was. Long Beach has a lot of clout. They wanted to be in one district. They like that.
They were talking about cutting Long Beach and?
Pieces, right?
Into pieces. Yeah, they were talking about that. So, now they, on these maps, they're whole.
Since we're talking about maps, I think it's, and for the edification of the residents, I think it's important to let them know that we are in a toss between the county supervisor district as well, between two and four. So, if you guys are weighing in on maps, weigh in on that also, depending on where you want to be.
I just heard we're in two.
Oh, we're in two?
We stayed in two. Okay, are there any further comments, discussions? That was my all communication. Now, thank you for putting it on the agenda at such short notice. Thank you, Madam City Manager, and to the staff for coming out. All comments from my colleagues, other than?
Happy birthday to Arlene's son tonight. She's trying to get out and wish her son a happy birthday, so happy birthday to your son.
Yes, thank you. It's Andrew Christian Rojas, and yes, he's in the United States Navy. So, God bless him, and thank you, and thank you, everyone here.
Well, thank you, Seal. We told you we'd get you out in time.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Happy birthday, Andrew, and thank you for serving our country. And to all my residents out here and there, happy holidays to you. This is our last meeting, unless there's an emergency, and we have to call a meeting. But we will see you in 2022, unless there is an emergency, and I have to, we have to call a special meeting. MPT?
I just want to also reiterate, as we have the last council meetings, two things. One is the city of Carson is moving forward, and we are doing the right changes, I believe. I want to encourage the city employees to enjoy their holiday season. We have a lot of work ahead for us to right the ship of Carson, California. And so, again, I want to say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. Happy New Year to everyone in Carson, to you and all your, the big family that we know of as Carson, California. That includes all of us. Thank you, and God bless you. Jim Dear, City of Carson, California.
Before I turn it over to Councilman Hicks, when is the employee Christmas party?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, we have not announced it officially yet, but that's okay. You're the mayor, so you can do that. We don't call it a party. We're just going to provide a luncheon, and we are actually in process now, but it's December twenty-second, and we're confirming the time with our Director of Community Services, Robert Lennox. It will be buffet style, be able to, in the atrium. We'll have tables. It'll be outside, so we'll be socially distanced, and we'll be able to provide that meal for them. And of course, the council will come by and provide their will wishes to the employees at that time as well. So, we'll make sure we have a flyer and noticed out for?
You're talking about a lunch for the employees?
Yes.
I see. This is newly announced just now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, Mr. Roberts, as always, I always offer to pay for the employee's luncheon, so may I please reach out to me so I can sponsor it?
Hope that voice was recorded just now.
Please make sure you order steak and lobster.
You're on tape.
It's on the record, so we're good.
Are you taping this, Joy?
I do it annually.
Please, please make sure you order steak and lobster.
It's one of my favorite things to do.
Also, on the nineteenth, we will be distributing 250 turkeys at Veterans Park. It wasn't on the flyer, at three o'clock. And then the toy giveaway in conjunction with the Winter Fest is at the community center on the eighteenth. Carson Citizens Cultural Arts Foundation will be distributing 500-plus toys. We have about six or seven hundred right now, but let's say five that will be distributed at the Winter Fest. Let's keep it safe. And I want to thank the Carson Citizens Cultural Arts Foundation for coming and supporting the city and just spreading a little cheer for our children. We've been, they've been doing this for now for the last five or six years. So, thank you for the partnership with the city of Carson. This is just added. And Councilman Cedric Hicks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to wish everyone a happy holidays and Merry Christmas. On the eighteenth of December at Mills Park, from eleven until one or thereafter, we'll be doing a toy giveaway for about 500 of our Carson residents, ages two to 12, have supported from Bulletin Display, Watson Land, Autism Speaks, Victory Outreach, DMBF, along with Lyrical Revolution. And just wanted everyone to come out, and you had to register. We're up to four sixty registered, and we get to the 500, then we have to put you on a waiting list to hopefully get additional toys.
Tell them to come over three?
Come over three o'clock over to the community center.
Send them over there.
To get additional toys for those who can't make it. And then I also wanted to adjourn this memory, if we could, in the name of Vincent Fernandez. He was the renowned singer that had done, I mean, other cities that I've worked in, over here in the city of Carson, we did different events. His music is? His music is world-known and I just wanted to pay an homage to him, Vincent Hernandez.
Thank you. So if there are no further comments, is there a...
I just want to say Merry, Happy Holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Happy Christmas, all that stuff.
I didn't call for any oral communications, for any public comments. Did we see any on that agenda item? Madam City? Did you, Mr. Smalley? I need you to come to the mic. Welcome back. You've been away for two years.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Distinguished members of the council, honorable staff. I contacted the city clerk's office this morning and asked what the procedure would be to be able to come and speak before you. And they said there was nothing to do other than show up. And as long as I had my card, my COVID card, it was good. But I heard you say when you first came out that there was paperwork that needed to be submitted, which I did not do. And I apologize for that, but I was misled.
You're good. That was, let me give you, I'll give you what I read, so you'll have a clear understanding. But you're good. You have your card, your vaccination, you were tested, your temperature is fine. You're not overheating, so you're fine. You have your mask on. So I'm going to give you a copy of what I read, so you can let our other residents in the mobile home park know.
Right.
Does it copy up there? Okay. All that information that I read is on the agenda and you can take one with you.
Okay, very good. Should I proceed with my comment?
Yes.
I stand before you this evening as a carrier of a message from our HOA board at Colony Cove Mobile Estates for Seniors. We have 1,200 seniors there and I'm the spokesperson for our HOA. In regards to the loss of our city clerk, we are adamant about rejecting any consideration of spending funds for a special election due to the fact that it is such a short period of time that they will spend in office. An appointment would be more appropriate and we can, it'd be more economical for us to save that money. Also, we wonder if it wouldn't be appropriate to ask the city attorney if it's some way that we can amend the employment contract whenever upper management personnel are placed in a position in our city, that we include a clause where if you choose to leave your position prior to the time that you're, before your term ends, that you pay an exit fee. An exit fee that we would be able to apply in a statewide search for a replacement. If they're going to leave us and put us in a lurch like that and cause us to spend money, then they should help to soften that blow to our general fund. So that was the message that our board wanted me to pass on to the board tonight, to the council. Thank you.
Happy holidays to you also. And if there's no further comments?
Oh, Arlene. Oh, I just wanted to wish everyone a happy holidays and a Happy New Year. So that was it. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. You're having too much fun down there. I wish you still been zoom. Well, having no further comments or communication, this meeting is adjourned.